The October 2017 meeting of the City of Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mr. Cattens.
Here.
Ms. Newcomb.
Here.
Mr. Palmetessa.
Here.
Chairman O'Neill.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are given testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain permits sooner by signing a waiver. That any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by the zoning board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization. In accordance with 1-1-I of the zoning ordinance, if you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek a special exemption. Anybody with any remarks? Jack, you did postings?
Yeah, I, Jack Swinney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton, do solemnly swear that I have posted a notice of a zoning hearing for the following properties: 120 North Kaiser Avenue, 1007 Quincy Avenue, 1753 Beaumont Avenue, 1218 South Webster Avenue, 1017, 1019 Remington Avenue, and 201 Prospect Avenue. Properties were posted on October 7th, 2017.
Okay, first case, good old things.
Actually, we're going to move...
It was one that was continued from last month.
Continued from last month, which would be the 120 North Kaiser Avenue, NBT Bank. Mr. Mansonelli? And also, agenda item number four, which was the Shamrock Outdoor billboard, is withdrawn. So if there's anybody here for that case, that will not be heard tonight. Item number four on tonight's agenda.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
My name is Emmett Mansonelli. My address is 625 East Drinker Street, Dunmore.
May I proceed?
Hi. We were here last month, as you all know, about the NBT Bank on Kaiser Avenue. I had submitted some plans to the board. I see that you have them on what our plan was. They were not...you didn't have anything last time, so there's a little bit of uncertainty as to what we were going to do. The one thing I would like to do is, I would like to present another plan. Since we submitted those plans, we met with the neighbors, and one of the things that they had expressed a concern for was some noise issues. So on the plans that were submitted, we show a fence, and during...a fence along the drive-thru. So what I've gotten is, if I can approach with a plan here?
Sure.
And what this is, is, I'm sure, along the court, this is just a wall...
Let's put it in the middle, so I can...
We have a retaining wall that would be built adjacent to the court for the drive-thru. And one of the things that we had is, we discussed with the neighbors the location of a fence. We're going to put a six-foot-high vinyl fence on top of the retaining wall.
Okay.
And what we will do with that...oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We met with the neighbors after we submitted the plans. We wanted to get the plans in to make sure we're on the agenda. And we went over what we were going to do on-site and explained that we would put a fence in along the court, basically parallel with the court. And if you look at the drawing that I just handed you, in the...almost on the bottom center of the page, there's a catch base, and it's a small rectangle there. And there's a heavy black line that runs along the court. And that heavy black line basically goes from the corner of that catch base, and it goes at an angle that would be the approach drive. And it goes along the court to the end of the parking lot on the other side of the building. So what we discussed was a six-foot-high vinyl fence running that entire length that would shield the homes that back up to the court from both light and also try to shield some of the noise issues. One of the concerns that they had was sometimes where the drive-thru is now, they get a loud engine revving or something like that at night. So one of the things we talked about, the bank, we don't have the final language yet, but we're going to put some signs up that basically ask people coming there to be consider the neighbors, turn the radio down, you know, try not to rev the...you know, rev their cars, but just so that they're aware that there's an issue there. And then the home on the corner of Jackson Street, we talked to them. The fence, they didn't want the fence to be too high to obstruct view of Kaiser Avenue, but we also said if six feet, if they need that higher, if they want it higher, we could go higher with it, but we were going to work with them. So I talked with representatives from NBT Bank and the neighbors, and basically that we have an agreement verbally, that as we submit our plans for review for permits, that we'll copy the neighbors and keep them informed of what's going on. Some of the things that we discussed were screening of air conditioning equipment, and one of the gentlemen there said he'd like to see how we plan on doing that. So we've agreed that if the variance is granted and we get into the actual design phase, that we'll work, you know, we'll work with the neighbors to make sure that their interests are protected.
Okay, and most of those issues were resolved with the neighbors? Like that was their only concern?
As far as I'm...I mean, one of the neighbors is here tonight. As far as I'm concerned, they were satisfied with what we had. If they have anything that they'd like to add, that's fine, but yeah, I think we've resolved any concerns that they have.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here like to give testimony? Any of the neighbors for the bank? No? Okay.
Before we make a motion and vote on this, I live three houses away from the closest... from the neighbor that's directly behind the bank, so I'm going to abstain from voting on this. So don't call my name in the roll call.
Okay.
I make a motion. Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Cattens?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. With the vote four to zero, has been granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Number two on tonight's agenda, All Good Things, 1007 Quincy Avenue.
Good evening. Good evening. We're...All Good Things is requesting a variance for property situated at 1017 Quincy Avenue. We realize there's an issue with parking, there is in the whole area. This is a seven-unit property, okay, that is in pretty rough condition. My clients anticipate renovating the same. The cost is speculated to be approximately $250,000. What we'd like to do is put six one-bedroom apartments in. We have three parking spots to the rear of the property. We realize that each apartment requires one and a half. That's the real issue, the parking. On the other hand, if we could put two apartments in presently and make each apartment a four-bedroom apartment, and then effectively have eight people there, which would be more people, more problem with the parking than if we're allowed to put six individuals in the one-bedroom apartment. It's the only way the property is going to be viable for any type of development. It's just going to deteriorate, otherwise it will destabilize the neighborhood further. And the neighborhood up there, if you're familiar with it, there's multifamily homes and single-family homes mixed. But it's a very large property in rough condition, that something needs to be done. We didn't create the hardship, but it won't be able to be developed as a practical matter if we don't get the variance for parking.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Can I get a point of clarity here? On the application, it's saying two-bedroom apartments?
We originally were trying to get two-bedroom apartments. We're at your mercy. We just thought the easiest way to do it, the less...the least amount of people...
No, what I'm saying is, you're stating that it's six one-bedroom apartments, but the application is saying six two-bedroom apartments. So I just want to get clarification on that.
It's my understa...Tim, it's my understanding? That's an error, it was six one-bedroom apartments.
Okay, thank you.
So I apologize for that error in the application.
So we'll agree to amend it to...we'll agree to amend it to six one-bedroom apartments?
Yes, that was a Scrivener's error.
So you have...you're saying you have zero parking, or?
There's three...there's three parts...there's three spots to park behind the building. We should, if we anticipate six apartments, we should have nine spots. But as a practical matter, the way the ordinance is written, we could put two apartments there with four bedrooms and generate essentially eight people. So the...that's what the ordinance doesn't say per occupant, it says per apartment, one and a half. So the logic of that is that we can have, if you give us six one-bedroom, we'll have less parking potential problems than if you...than if we put two four-bedroom apartments, which were in conformity with all the regulations.
What does your client...what are their plans as far as rental? Who do they plan on renting to?
We're targeting, if we can get the six one-bedroom apartments, to medical students. And the reason we're doing that is, medical students are pretty focused. I represent other individuals in the community that rent to medical students. There's never any difficulties, never any problem. They're too focused on trying to survive to become physicians, and they're not partying like the typical kids at the various universities. So that's what we'd be attempting to target specifically, one-bedroom apartments. In our experience, through this client and others, they want one-bedroom apartments. They don't want to...they don't want to be in an apartment with anyone else. They're pretty focused.
Is your client only a building now, or is this contingent on this going through?
Owns the building presently, yes.
Thank you.
What is the lot dimensions, do you know? Is it forty foot, probably, around that?
I don't...it could be on the application. I don't...quite candidly, don't know. It's at least...
Jack, is that accurate, like, three spots we're looking at, or four? Because I didn't know...I didn't have a measuring...
Yeah, I was up and looked at it. It's tight, but I think three is the maximum in the back. I don't know that...as it sits correct...as it sits right now. I don't know what the dimension of the lot is offhand.
Forty by 150, it appears to be.
Yeah, so that would be three.
The other problem is, it's just going to...if we don't get the variance, respectfully, it's just going to become an eyesore, further eyesore in the community, because no one's going to...no one is going to develop it commercially, because you need to put people in there. It's just a matter of dollars, you have to be able to rent the place, the number of people that will be able to bear the cost.
I think some of our concerns is that you have parking for three and you need nine. So that's six cars on the street, that's already massively packed and congested.
There's no question, but I can put two...I can put two four-bedroom apartments in without any variance today and have eight people parking, because I do have three spots, so...right? So we're going to...I can do it appropriately, legally, without a variance, and don't have to come to this body.
Oh, I under...
It still caused more difficulty in the neighborhood than if I get...than if I can get the variance.
Yeah, because when I drove there the other day to look at the apartment...
There's parking in the hills bad everywhere.
Yeah, I couldn't even...I couldn't even find a spot to pull over to look at the place. That's just going to be the big concern. So I think moving down to less apartments would probably be an agreeable consensus.
I can offer a suggestion. If I was there, I looked at the property, I walked from the alley in, I think you may want to revisit that, because if you dig that back out, park them cars diagonally, I'm sure that you can get up to six cars in the back of that lot. I would think, rather than go with two four-unit apartments, maybe revisit that, come back. And I'm sure there's more room there, I'm sure of it.
I don't think they could be stacked, though. You know what I'm saying? It's just...
Well, if you pull...like I said, I paced it off both directions. And if you come in from either side, or you have your parking, you could line cars up diagonally. And again, it would take alleviate...you might be looking for...to, instead of getting three cars back there, possibly getting six cars back there, and not having such a burden to the street.
You guys are running the show in girls, so if that's what you're directing me to do, then that's what we'll...
I didn't have a measuring tape, so... I did see that it was, you know, you'd have to clear a lot of brush out, but...
Jack, what do you think about that?
I think that would be very tight. I'm not sure if that could work, when you consider the buffer zone area. I understand what you're saying, Bob. I certainly would be happy to look into it, but I think that would be very tight to get that many cars that way. But certainly possible.
Putting three cars on the road...
Certainly possible.
Putting three cars out on the road is a lot different than putting six.
Sure. Is there anyone else here to give testimony on this? Okay.
But I can put five out without getting anybody's approval, because I have room for three. I can put two four-bedroom, and put eight people, and put five out there presently without...
That's up to you.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to...trying to get to the...trying to get to the finish line to say how I can do it legally, and it's going to cause more of a problem than if you give me the variance and I put six one-bedroom.
Well, I think we're all trying to get to the finish line, Attorney Gallagher. We're trying to get there so everyone's happy, actually, the owner's happy, the new owner, as well as the neighbors evidently are here tonight. So let's hear from them and get to the finish line together.
If you guys want to come up and give testimony?
I'm going to stand here, so if they want to ask me a question...
Yeah, in case you have a question for him, or...
You can have a seat at the chair there, that microphone works.
That microphone will work.
If you're directing me, you're not going to direct me.
No, no, no. If you want to sit there, then you...
If you want to...yeah, so if you want to ask her...
This way you can ask her questions after she's done testifying.
Just make sure that green light's on.
Okay, Miss, if you want to raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear your testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
May I state your name and address, please?
My name is Darla Sherman. I live at 1009 Quincy Avenue in Scranton, Pennsylvania.
May I proceed?
I would like to make a couple historical points, just to kind of recap this, maybe you probably all remember, for people who weren't here. The third week of July, I believe it was on July 24th, we were in here with Mr. McAndrew, his contractor, regarding the same property. They were requesting a hearing to stop demolition on the property. They promised immediate action, and at that point, the board granted them a twelve-month reprieve. Since then, nothing has been done. On August 14th of this year, a sign appeared on the front door of the property for sale by owner. At that point, the grass was probably eight to ten to twelve inches high, maybe. I did contact Mr. McAndrew and also Mr. Rizzo, in not very pleasant terms, I'm afraid, because I was not very happy. I did not hear back from Mr. McAndrew. Mr. Rizzo called me out on it, as he had a right to. He said he had no understanding that this was going on, that he would seek to buy the property himself. He didn't feel...
Could you clarify what you were saying there? I didn't understand what you're...you mentioned two gentlemen's names?
When we came here last...last time in July...
Let me just interrupt a little bit. This is the zoning hearing board. What you were before...
Oh, I was before council. City council.
Okay.
Okay. When I was before city council, this is what happened. Because three weeks after that hearing, I then found a for-sale-by-owner property. I was obviously confused. I was upset. I thought plans were in motion to get this property rehabbed, fixed up, so on and so forth, and then contacted the gentleman who were here at the city council hearing for As far as I understood, the owner, Mr. McAndrew, did not respond to me. The contractor, Mr. Rizzo, did. On the following day, on August 15th, he came to the house, he did take down the for-sale-by-owner sign, and the grass was cut. And since then, nothing has happened until we're here today. And I have some questions and concerns. The first one has always...already been brought up concerning the parking. Regardless of how many off-street parking spaces they provide, as far as I understand, there's no mandate that says their tenants have to park there, which means, can we in the neighborhood support? Realistically, we're not talking six cars. We're talking probably nine to twelve and maybe more, even if they go to six one-room units or one-bedroom units. We already, in the 1000 block, are accepting the overflow from the property that was reconstructed following a fire at the corner of the 900 block of Quincy and Ash Street. We also have employees at the hospital, at Moses Taylor Park on our block and walk. My question, which probably there isn't a real legal answer to, I'm wondering what, if any, rights do we as property owners have?
Well, they can't make someone, the owner, you, someone else, I mean, if there's a lot, they can't make them park there.
I understand that. That's my point. So they can provide it, but we're still going to end up with the cars parked on the street.
Yeah, if they had enough for sixteen cars...
They don't have to park there.
Right, they don't have to park there.
Right. So that's my one point. My second point is, I'm concerned about the structural integrity of the property. It literally is falling down. It's falling down in my yard. It looks like it's falling down on the sidewalk. When I came before council last time, I had about thirty or forty photographs, which they did not want to see, but apparently, those of you on the board, if not all of you, some of you have been past, you've looked at it. It's been in a state of advancing deterioration for twenty to twenty-five years. Nothing has been done to mitigate it. I do not know. I do know in the past, there have been squatters living in there. There's been nobody living there, but pizzas have been delivered there. There are footprints in the snow going in and out of the building. And as far as I understand, from former tenants of the place, former tenants have said to me that they have stripped the boiler, they have stripped the plumbing. There's basically nothing in that building to let it be a building, and I...it's a huge building. Apparently, they have resources to work with, but I find a $250,000 estimate to renovate, repair, rehab that building is, I think, a little bit unusual. That's my estimate, my thought. I'm wondering if there's any possibility that we could have the structural integrity of the building evaluated.
Well, when a building's condemned, they make you bring it 100% up to code. Plumbing, electric, structural, every single thing.
The building has been condemned a minimum of six times over the last number of years. To the best of my knowledge, it's never been brought up to code. It's come back to tax sale, and it's been bought again, and it still has not been brought back up to code. As far as I understand, there have been no people working at it or on it. I don't...
Has anybody come to the zoning board wanting to renovate it?
Excuse me?
Has anybody come to the zoning board before wanting to renovate it?
I don't know. I've not been aware of any action before the city council meeting in July, and this meeting today.
Well, you would have been notified. If you lived right next door, you would have been notified if they'd come to the zoning board.
I haven't been notified. I've seen the condemnation notices on it. They've been ripped off, they've been spray-painted over. I have seen, there was, a year or so ago, there was a permit in the window to have work done. That expired, it elapsed, nothing was done. For six months to a year, the building was open unlocked. I don't...it's apparently locked now, I don't know.
Could you tell me when the last time it was an actual seven-unit apartment building? Do you know how long ago?
I couldn't tell you the date. It's been a year longer. It's been a long time.
And how was the parking situation when it was up and running?
Horrible. I mean, I've lived there for thirty...thirty years and three months, basically. When I moved in there, the apartment building was beautiful, it was maintained. It was not falling apart. The tenants in there were respectable, clean. We didn't have a parking problem. There were older people, there were several families with young kids in there. We didn't have a parking problem. What happened is, I don't know whether it was sold, whether it went into tax sale. The older people went into nursing homes, died, moved away, and then we had a succession, one after the other, of absentee landlords, drug problems, cops there, people in hiding with roadblocks in the alley and on Quincy Avenue, and the floodlights and the bullhorns. People caught and arrested in my backyard between my garage and my fence from this building. I've been to the detectives, I've been here, there, the other place. There's been nothing done, because they need marked money, there's this, that, the other thing. Which is not to say that this is what these individuals want to do. I'm just saying it has a twenty-plus-year history of going from bad to worse to worse to worse to worse.
Attorney...excuse me, Attorney Gallagher, when did your clients purchase that property?
June 14th of this year.
Thank you. I know it's tough living next to properties like this throughout the city and everything, but these people just purchased it. I mean, so they can't be held accountable for the past.
Oh, I understand that.
And I agree with some of what you're saying. I mean, the parking is a problem, and the building is dilapidated. But it comes upon the situation of, what do you want done with this building? If we turn them down and they don't want to invest any money into it, what do you think is the best fit for that building, then?
What do I think?
Yes.
I would wish, I don't know if the city has the money. My understanding is that back in July, we came up to put a stop-demolition order on it. I would like it demolished, and then I would like the opportunity. I can't afford it, but I have family who can afford. I would like to buy the property, fence it off, turn it into a green space, a community garden, a community park, whatever. That's what I would like to do. Would we turn it to the tax rolls? And my other question regarding, I don't know anything about these people. It's not my business. I don't know if it's legal for it to be y'all's business. I'm just wondering who's buying into it? Where are they from? Are they going to pay taxes? Are they tax exempt? Are they nonprofit? Can we do a little bit of research before we move forward with granting any, anything to anyone?
May I address that? You can't discriminate whether the people are nonprofit or not, so her request to know that is not relevant. But we are for profit, so we do, do pay taxes. But even if we didn't, you can't consider that, or you violate the applications, the constitutional rights.
We're well aware of that.
So my question comes back to, as property owners, do we have any rights? I am not saying that it has to be demolished. I'm saying I want it to see put to productive, good use, and if it's not going to be, I want it gone. I think, um, it's very difficult to look at our city and the financial situation that it's in, that it's been in. It appears to be getting worse, not better. And I think we need to stand up, and we need to take care of our neighborhoods, we need to take care of our city, before we take care of people from out of the area who buy in to put money in their pockets while our taxes go up and our property values go down.
Does, does your client live in Scranton?
That's totally irrelevant.
Well, I, I- She, she mentions absentee landlords.
They can't be considered by the body. Your counsel will tell you, whether the person's a citizen of Scranton, or Dunmore, or Alphent, is a matter that really is not relevant for your consideration. Her desire to have people that she approves respectfully is another thing that you can't consider. This is America. She can't control it.
Yes, but absentee landlords are, are, are an issue that are brought up often on the board, so that's my motive for asking.
People that own the property, operate a business in this county, and reside in this county, pay taxes in this county. Some of the employees live in Scranton, some live other places, but in the county. But for example, when she said she doesn't want the people at the, the hospital to park there, maybe she doesn't want the hospital to function either.
Well, I, that's just irrelevant. I just wanted to know, because absentee landlords are, are a problem that a lot of people bring up with multifamily dwellings.
She wants it fixed. We're trying to fix it. She wants it, she complains about us fixing it. I don't know what that, God's not gonna come down and fix it. Someone's gonna have to fix it, or it's gonna get worse. We're willing to do that. That's why we're here. We bought the property in June. It's October. We're here trying to do it.
Attorney Gallagher, do you know if your client spoke with any of the neighbors, like, as far as their plans go to try-
I'm sorry, that's quite a-
Do you know if your clients met with any of the neighbors to express their plans, what they want to do, how much money they want to invest into it?
I'm not aware that they have.
Okay. I mean, sometimes that erases some of the problems that come before us when they do meet, you know, before the meeting, just to express, you know, back and forth to each other their concerns, so.
But if, if, if this young lady, this woman is having complaints about the people at the, at the hospital parking there, I, I don't have some magic wand to say we can create more, more parking in the neighborhood. There's a parking problem. I can't help it that the, the hospital parks there.
Right. I, I think she's just expressing frustration when it comes to the parking and the entire neighborhood there, as we all know is, is a problem throughout the city. Attorney Gallagher, do you have any direct questions for her?
Do you have a problem with someone developing the property, ma'am?
No, I don't.
Okay.
If it's legitimately done so, and if it benefits the city-
What does that mean legitimately, from your perspective, ma'am?
That means that my property is not devalued.
Well, it's been, your property's been devalued-
Yes, I know. I know that.
Could you let me finish? Because you're contiguous property, and the more that, the worse-conditioned property my clients own gets, the more it's gonna adversely affect your property, right?
I completely understand that.
And that's why we're here to attempt to put two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the contiguous property, so we can financially establish viable piece of property, and the contiguous property, including yours, would be increased in value.
I understand that. I believe that's what we were here for in July. I've seen nothing happen, except we're back here yet again, it's a revisit, yet, yet again.
You don't get it. The process is to come to these gentlemen and this young lady with, with our, what we want to do before we can do anything. We can't go out and do things without their approval.
I understand that.
Okay. Well, that's, that's why we're here, though. You can't complain, you can't complain that we didn't do anything yet, if we're here to get what approval we can get to do, to satisfy you.
Attorney Gall- Attorney Gallagher, if this variance is granted, what's their timeframe for starting work and completion?
We think we could, we would be able to get it done before, before the end of the summer, pardon me, before the end of the summer. Weather has an impact in terms of the exterior property issues, but not the interior. So we wanted to, we can get the variance, we, we'd attempt to do it as soon as possible, to do everything in the outside that we can do, before the weather sets in, and then go to the interior and try to develop, and then come back outside when the weather breaks.
Ma'am, I have a question.
Yes.
What do you think of the property as it is right now?
It's falling down. It's horrible.
Okay, so anything that they do to this property is gonna be approved? Right, you want me to say that?
I would hope you're right. That was what I thought and believed, and I, I left in July feeling like we were reaching a compromise and a solution. I'm just not so sure right now that that's really happened, or whether... We're hearing the same song and dance that we've heard for the last however many years about the people who have bought it, they're gonna rent it to professional people, they're gonna rent it to medical students. And, and I, I'm not saying they're gonna do any, that they're not gonna do this. I don't know. I'm saying historically, we've been fed this for years and years and years, and nothing has happened yet. They might be the charm.
That's right. This may be the charm, uh, number one. Number two, I, I don't see where it's gonna hurt. These people just purchased this property June of this year.
June fourteenth.
Three months ago, four months ago. I mean, once, once they start putting money into it, that's a non-stop process. That don't stop with ten thousand, with forty thousand. With a hundred thousand, possibly up to a quarter or three hundred thousand dollars, once you start this, you cannot stop it. I don't, I, I don't understand why you're not willing to give them an opportunity to issue a warrant or parking, and it is any of you. Because I've seen buildings that people rehabbed turned out gorgeous.
I've seen some of them too. I've seen some of the ones that the contractor they were working with, I'm not sure if they're still on board with him. He has done beautiful work. I'm not contesting that.
You're gonna have to give, you're gonna have to give them the benefit of the doubt.
For, excuse me, for how long?
Well, if they say, you wanna start immediately with that, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, gentlemen, we can't move forward without your approval. So even though she desires us to move forward, by June, we're here in October, we can't do what she wants us to do until we get your approval. So when we get your approval, then we'll do it all due speed. The, the quicker we get it done, the more viable it is financially. It doesn't do us any good to drag it out. We're gonna go and work on the project as quickly as we can, invest our money, because it's the dollars and cents that it's about.
And he has a date planned for finishing, so you, you gotta take into account, sometimes there's snags, and sometimes things get slowed down.
I understand that.
You gotta give it, you gotta give it time.
Was there anything else that you wanted to say?
No, except that if it's at all legal, and it probably is not, I, I, as I said earlier, I would really, I would suggest a full look at this business, so on and so forth, before anything moves forward.
I, I don't know what this business means.
I don't know what business means. You, you want the building looked at before it's worked on, but the, the fact is that it doesn't get, no occupa- no occupancy permits can be distributed until it's been inspected by every kind of inspector that there is. So they're not gonna do it before, they will do it after. That's the process. Is my, my right, Jack?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It will be completely inspected, and we'll have to pass all the inspections before they'll get their certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to give testimony? Please come to the podium.
I'm here as a representative of my daughter, who lives at ten thirty-six Quincy Avenue.
Okay. If you guys want to be sworn in, uh, please raise your right hand and state your name. Oh, I'm sorry, Salamis, I have testimony you're about to give of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
And state your-
Ten thirty-six Quincy Avenue, Kristen Lally.
Okay. State your name.
Stephen Coches, it's K-O-C-H-I-S, and the address is twelve oh seven Quincy Avenue in Dunmore.
Okay, you guys could proceed.
Well, good evening, since I happen to know most of you. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you.
The first thing I'd like to bring up, uh, Mr. Sweeney, is this property, or has this property ever been on the demolition list?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, that solves problem number one. Just as she said, she'd like to see it demolished. That answers your question. The question here is not, we have to have this property, we have to have X number of apartments. The story lies right here. It's on the demolition list. That resolves the whole thing. Now it becomes a piece of property somebody can build on. Problem solved. So that idea of, once it starts, the ball starts rolling, that's not true. I served on that board for nine years. We had multiple properties that we had approved for a number of things. And you know what happens? People change their mind, people run out of money. So that's not a guarantee, that they say, I have X number of dollars, and it's gonna be put into this property. Number two, this property was condemned. It was condemned for a number of reasons. Now, I'm sure you looked at the property. We have photos if you need to look at them. The stucco has been removed for years. So my question, is there mold in there? I don't know. It was condemned from the outside. Obviously, now with the change, and since it has a new listing, it is now in R-one zone. The most restrictive clause for that is, it's a single-family home. Now, because of that-
It would be a, a two, two-family home.
No, no, the, it states, not the least, but the most restrictive. If you read that article, it can revert back to the most restrictive.
Hold on, one, one second, Steve. Cause from my understanding, it's two units if it's up and down, correct? Or side by side?
If it's side by side, built as a two-unit, then it could be used as two units.
Right. This is up and down. The apartments are up and down.
Well, no, it's-
And, and the restriction is, what is the most restrictive portion of that zone? That zone is R-one, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
R-one A, I believe.
One A. But you wanna put two apartments in there? Fine. That's not a problem. You're gonna rehab that building. Great. It, it's not a story of, we don't, or people don't want that rehab. Love to see it rehabbed. But what is the cost of rehab to the people who live there? This poor lady wants to know, does she have a voice? Yeah, she does have a voice. You are her voice. Put yourself in her shoes. Would you want that if you lived in that neighborhood? Now, we all know that a few of your gentlemen are involved and own apartments. You know what it costs to rehab an apartment. You looked at that property, you look at those porches on the outside, the height of that, it's a three-story building. The stucco, that's all gotta be repaired or replaced. And we're not even looking at the interior. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, seems like a lot of money. Not for that particular property. The reason for that, being put in the zoning laws and the condemnation, is to protect these people. It's to protect you if you have the same thing in your own neighborhood. And, and that's what they're asking you for. Let's take a look at, what does it do? People wanna say, well, let's have six apartments. Great. Now what does that change? Six apartments, they need a dumpster. Six apartments, they need buffering. Five foot, five foot. Now my forty-foot lot is thirty-foot wide. How many cars do I get in there?
I think it's six.
On thirty feet. What do we need on it? We need how many feet for a parking space?
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen. You believe, you paced it off? Did you measure it off?
No, I paced it off.
Okay. And, and where would we like to put the dumpster? Six apartments, he needs a dumpster.
First of all, you're coming here, what you're explaining to what he's coming here for, it's two different things.
How are they different, please?
Well, they're coming here for various parking. We're, we're not gonna, we don't have every rule or every set thing that they're gonna do there. We don't have that. We don't have no information on that.
And they, and they should have provided it to you, sir.
Other than to move this project forward, I already offered a suggestion to take a step back, relook at it, and then proceed again. Did I not offer that?
I'm not arguing with you. You seem that you were a little upset.
Absolutely not.
Okay, good. Here was your solution, right here. It was, it was on the condemnation list. That's solution. That's the easiest solution to the whole thing. It wasn't that they paid a fortune for this property. That's why you, you pick it up for twelve thousand five hundred. The solution was there. These people went, and the name on this, I believe, is Russo and, uh, no, Mr. McCandrew. They went and had it taken off of the demolition list. It would have been-
What's the harm in that?
Huh?
What's the harm in it, took it off the demolition list? Tell me.
What's the harm of it?
Yeah.
Do, do they have the permission of anybody to do any work on that? I, I mean, why didn't they come before the zoning board and see if they can get it approved here before they took it off the demolition list?
You have to start somewhere, right or wrong?
Right, and why didn't they start here?
Well, you have to figure out-
Right or wrong, right or wrong.
Hold on, hold on, guys, hold on. You have to figure out if you could save the property first.
I think you need to know what you can do with the property before. I, I, I think they've come here with a very open book. There's no cost on their application. I looked at it. I, I mean, we've thrown around X number of dollars. There's no parking, there, there's not even an attempt to provide, and it says you need to provide that with it, is what are your parking plans? It's very specific, how many parking spots you need. You all sit there and agree that there's no parking on the block, but yet you're willing to say, uh, that's all right.
No, that's not what we said. At its own-
I didn't say you said it. I'm generally speaking of everyone.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry that you're in a disagreement. I don't know if I rubbed you the wrong way, but-
Well, you said that it was on the condemnation list.
No, on the demolition list.
Okay, on the demolition list. I purchased a home that was on the demolition list. I rehabbed that whole house.
I did too.
And there's not a thing wrong with the house today, and I've done it over twenty years ago, so it could be saved. It could be moved forward, providing that they get the proper parking.
Mr. Palmetessa, I have, I own properties in South Side, okay? I have taken properties off the demolition list. And you know what I did? I had to go, I had, uh, let me finish.
Guys, let's just step back for a second, because we don't need the, the arguing. Let's, let me see if I could ask a simple question to Jack and our legal advice. When, when you do a house, you're, like that, your first step is to?
Well, obviously, if it's on the demolition list, you gotta get it off, otherwise it'd be demolished before they got here.
Correct. That's what I was saying before. And then they're here to see what they could, put on the thing that they're trying to save.
I mean, Attorney Gallagher's offering two alternatives. It sounded like six one-bedroom apartments or two four-bedroom apartments. You know, that's, that's where we're at at this point.
And our point is, there's just not enough parking.
For either, for either one.
Well, no, he can proceed with his four-bedroom apartments, two apartments. He's right. He doesn't need to come here. He can go and start that project.
It's pretty myopic, from my perspective. Try to dev- yeah, it's pretty myopic. He's complaining about six, but we can put more people in there and have more of a problem with the parking. Trying to remedy the problem as best we can. But we can't put two apartments with four bedrooms and have, have eight people there, and eight people have to park on the, uh, five of the eight people have to park on the street, because we have three off-parking. That doesn't, that doesn't remedy the problem at all. He's complaining about it. He had the opportunity to buy the property, has all the contiguous property owners in the neighborhood. They, they didn't. They let it go there, didn't do anything, didn't worry about it destabilizing the neighborhood, and now they're complaining, we're trying to do something.
Dan, didn't we just say that this reverted to a one-family, and since it's not side by side?
No, it's, that building's side by side and up and down, so it would stipulate two.
I think that's what Alan, Alan was saying.
I would agree, yeah.
All right. Now, where do we have the eight people?
There were two four-bedroom apartments.
Right.
Okay. You figure it out. You're pretty good at math. You seem to be throwing numbers around.
I see, uh, let's see, a husband, a wife, and six kids.
Four people unrelated in any apartment. We were on the zoning board for a long time.
I know that. So you're, you're telling me you're gonna, you're gonna put X number of people in there.
I'm, I'm saying we have the ability, the zoning ordinance allows that math to be correct.
You don't need anything special for that, is what you're saying? You don't need anything special for that, is what you're saying?
I'm saying that's allowed in the zoning ordinance. Unless you disagree with-
Can we make it a roomy house, Dan, is my question to you?
Wouldn't it be a roomy house? He could, I mean-
Four unrelated people. You're putting eight, you're putting eight. You're right, up to four, I agree with you, up to four. You're putting eight people, you told me. So now you have-
Well, no, if you could have four unrelated people, each, each one of them with a car. Each one of them with a car.
So versus, six places, everybody's got two cars, so I only have eight people in the building?
I mean, you could speculate as to how many cars it's going to be. Everybody could speculate to that. We're just, we're just here trying to find a middle ground if there is any.
Yeah, I mean, that could be one car per apartment or two cars per apartment. I mean, you can't say what's going to be in either one of you guys.
Eight people coming there versus having unknown number of people coming in, because now you're going to have six different tenants. The probability, as we all know, there is no such thing as one and a half parking spaces, and nobody owns one and a half cars. It's that simple. So if you have it filled with six people, and you've got six couples, there's probably twelve cars. And that's the reality. Versus two, four, now you have eight people, you only have eight cars, that's a better deal for me. So, but just going back to what it all is. Agree that, if it remains as six, they do need the buffering for the parking. The parking's going to be paid. We have a question of impervis cuffing, as to what percentage, because between the building and all of the parking space. The trash requirement obviously changes, because you now have that, and you need a place to put the trash.
I, I'm Jack, if this gets denied, he could just go and do his four, two four-bedrooms without having to come back here, is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yeah, he could do two units, he could put eight people, or four people on each side. So, Attorney Gallagher's making a valid point. Who's to say how many people have-
And in that case, the building's been rehabbed, maybe it looks great? And that problem's solved. But six apartments?
I can't speak for the developer, I'm just saying what's-
I know, and I'm not expecting, but I'm just saying.
I understand, I mean-
As a point, would I'd rather see the place redone? Fine. But it's not like there is not an alternative. The alternative is, it ends up back on the demolition list.
Correct.
And there is a point in time, it would, you know, what's your preference? Demolished or rehabbed? I don't live on that block, I live a few blocks away, but my daughter lives there, you know, and it's their decision. It's, you are their voice.
I'd be curious to see-
And I would hope that you would express what they want. But, that's up to you.
I'd be curious to see if there's any common ground between two units and six units.
There's never a common ground.
Sometimes you're right.
It was thrown out there. If it wasn't thrown out, it'd be a different story, but it was already thrown out. So, it's, and the fact is, you'd rather see just eight cars than twelve. So, and it's my daughter's turn.
Okay, you can proceed.
And I'm just reiterating everything that my father said, and also my neighbor. The parking concern, of course, you know, I have a family, I have four small children, you know, and we don't have any parking. So, parking is tough right now for us, so I can't imagine, if there were six apartments, you know, eight more cars, I might be parking a block away. The same thing with, if it is, you know, a six-unit, with the dumpster, you know, I, as whatever, when you have six units and you have that many people coming in, you do worry, of course, about the neighbors, you know, and I know it's their right when they purchase a building. But, you know, we want to take care of our neighborhood, because we do have a nice neighborhood, and there are a lot of families there, a lot of children. So we want to make sure, that really what is done is for the best interest of our neighborhood and of our children, as, you know, I'm sure many of you have children, and also would feel that same way if you had someone coming in. And the building, I do have several pictures here, I know many of you visited it. I mean, it is a mess. I can't, I feel that in order to restore it and to remodel it, it would, I can't even imagine. I would think it would cost much more than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to make it a positive impact in our neighborhood, you know, and to get, you know, the tenants in there that we would, we would hope that would have a positive impact on our neighborhood. And really, that's all I have to say, I think there's someone else that has to-
Did you want to bring the pictures up?
Sure.
Thank you. Anyone else here to give testimony?
Approach the bench.
Podium. Raise your right hand. You solemn swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Arthur Russo, eleven-sixteen Columbia Street, Scranton.
You can proceed.
The only stake that I have in this is, the company is hiring me to my company to renovate the building. They, when they bought the building at a tax sale, it wasn't told to them that it was on the demolition list. We then appealed it to the appeals board. So, we came here and appealed it, and got it off the demolition list, with the next step being the zoning board. So, we, they bought three or four houses at that tax sale. And, there was, they put some for-sale signs on some houses, and they, it was a mistake that they put it on this particular house. We took it off, really haven't done much to the property since they bought it until we came here tonight. We have, we figured it's going to be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to renovate six one-bedroom apartments. I think I've done enough apartments to know what they're going to cost. Mr. Coaches was on this board, and thank God he's off it, because if you drive by nine-seventy Ridge and four-fifteen Warm Street, there's two projects that are remodeled, done, they look beautiful, on the taxes, that Mr. Coaches voted against.
I'm going to stop, that's his prerogative to have that vote.
Well-
I mean, we're not here, we're not here to slam anyone, I mean, no one slammed you.
Yeah, well-
Let's just keep it to what we're talking about here, thank you.
All right. So, I know what we're putting into the house, I know what could be done with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. We tried to sit down and say, well, if we put two apartments and put four bedrooms in each apartment, it's going to be eight people at least living there. It's going to be eight cars. Let's go with med students, they only want one bedroom, they don't want roommates. The house is going to be, we don't care that the plumbing is ripped out, we don't care that there's no heat, we don't care the roofs, it's all going to be done over. So, there's going to be six one-bedroom apartments with one person living in each apartment. Otherwise, if you put two apartments in there, you're going to get eight bedrooms. You're going to have more people. Now, if the neighbors are really against the project, why don't they just, I think, I think they bought the building for twelve-five? I don't know what they have invested with Attorney Gallagher. If they want to buy the house for fifteen thousand dollars, let them buy it for fifteen thousand dollars, chip in and tear it down, and save their neighborhood. Can't be fairer than that. Went to the tax sale, bought it, it was on the demolition list, we didn't know that. We're trying to be good neighbors. They pay taxes. I wish more people would come into the city like them. They, they're a great company. So, if the neighbors want to buy it, they could buy it. Tell us tonight, we'll have Attorney Gallagher drop the sales agreement.
Well, I think part of the problem here is, is-
You have these old houses, Mr. Wash, right? I'm going to tell you though, the city is, thirty years ago, forty years ago, we didn't have the cars that we have, the streets. I agree with the neighbors, they're trying to protect themselves. But this house is here, it's there. We want to get it on the tax rules, we want to develop it. But, we can't do it with, you know, otherwise what do you do? Honestly, I just told them, sell it to the neighbors, let them all chip in and tear it down, let the city tear it down for them.
But maybe if they came in with a better plan, instead of just a little piece of paper with a couple of words on here with a plan, that they could see. You've been before it before.
But invest more money into it? A plan, a plan is here, six one-bedroom apartments, that's what we want.
There might be two parking spots, there might be thirty.
There's no parking, there's, whatever he said back there, there's no parking. You can't do backflips and beg to do, these buildings are here, we're trying to do something with them. We're trying to do something with them. Not going to keep telling people to get an engineer, to design a parking lot, do this, when they're just going to say no, and they're just wasting their money. There's no parking, there's three spots, Mr. Palmetessa said maybe there could be six spots, I don't know. But, we're trying to be as fair as possible. If you don't want to do it, I'd love the neighbors to buy the house off me, for what they paid for it.
Jack?
Can we back up a second, and I'm going to ask you a question? And I agree with you, these houses are here, but you got to be fair to each neighborhood too. I mean, and you don't live in that neighborhood, it's okay for you to come in and develop, and you say you're going to do a job, and you do a good job what you do. But these people still live here. But let's back up to, you're stating that there's going to be six one-bedroom apartments, and you want, you want to rent to medical students. So what happens if the medical students don't come to that house? And now you got someone up there that's a husband, a wife, so now you have a couple on there, and possibly a child that they can put into a small room in that apartment and everything. So there's no guarantee that these are going to-
There's no guarantee, but if you market it to med students, I rent to enough med students that I think you could get them? No, there is no guarantee.
Right, so I mean, you're, you're-
You're right.
I just want to correct your statement, that this is not a guarantee that there's going to be one person in every unit. So let's be on board when it comes to that.
You're right, there's no guarantee. But that's the market that we're going to go for. And when you're trying to get med students, you want to have a building that's just med students, because all these kids do is study. So you can't have a young person that's going to go out and party on a Friday night when they're trying to study. So, it would be geared for med students.
Jack, did you see that picture with the backyard? Do you think it's, I don't think six cars would fit in there, but do you think, do you agree that more than three would fit back there?
It's hard to say, it's right. And I think it's certainly possible that we could get more than three spots in there. But, there's still going to be a deficit in parking either way.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I think Mr. Palmetessa is right, that if it's engineered correctly, it's possible to get more than three.
This is the whole challenge the board always comes up with, because we want to be fair to everybody. We have people that, you know, want to come in and invest money in Scranton, and then we have to look out for the neighbors also. So it is a hard decision, we go over this all the time, and we take it all to heart. It's a, it's a challenge to decide on it, we want to make as many people happy as we can, and-
It's a hard call.
Yeah. Raise your right hand, sir. You solemn swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Ted Tansley, I live at ten-twenty Quincy Avenue.
Okay.
Tansley, T-A-N-S-L-E-Y. I just want everybody to close their eyes. Just close your eyes. You guys are all snicker and laugh. I have a wife and two kids. They had to park-
I'm going to correct you, I'm going to correct you right there, I'm going to stop you. There's no one up here snickering and laughing about what's going on here. So, that statement, it doesn't sit well with me, to make that assumption.
Okay, but I have a wife and a kid.
And I appreciate that, but no one, I just want to get it straightened out, there's no one on this board that's snickering and laughing about any testimony here.
They had to walk from the car wash on Ash Street, because of the parking situation on Art Street. Across from me, a gentleman that I knew that lived there, had rented a home that he told me was just going to be a mother, a father, and two children. Well, it turns out that we now have fourteen people and seven cars. I have a house next to me that is rented out to medical students. Medical students. The gentleman rented the house, a whole house, as single bedrooms. There are seven of them. They bring seven more cars to the street.
Well, that's something, if it's a single-family house, you need to-
It's a single-family house, I don't know if he's registered to have it as a business.
Hold on, hold on one second, that would be something to ask down there, because if it's a single-family house, you can only have four people.
Well, you got seven medical students living in there. How that's possible, I don't know. We're renting by the room.
Yeah, you have to contact licensing and see.
But, my thing is, we're-
I'm just trying to help you out.
Yeah, but I'm saying, it's a, it's a major parking problem. I have a rental on this side with three more vehicles. I have a halfway house that has a van and two vehicles for employees to work there. We have a corner that no one lives on, because the house is set back on. You figure that would be the relief, even for their building, which would be the relief in regular time. But, as was stated earlier, there was a house built on Ash Street. The guy provided beautiful parking out the back, for more than enough that he could put in that house. But who wants to walk from the back of the house, up a hill, when they can park and walk across the street? Or park in the front and walk in?
Well, that's what we were saying before, we can't physically make someone-
That's, you're absolutely right, you can't physically make them do it.
I hear what you're saying, but we can't physically make someone park.
Then can we do a permit parking?
That's up to city council.
Yeah, city council.
Would that, would they, do you think they'd go for something like this? Because we're dealing with, I mean, it's outrageous. It is absolutely outrageous. And you're saying you want to put six single-family rooms in? That's a minimum of six cars, a minimum. And you know yourself, that they're not going to park behind the building. No one will park behind the building, when you can walk right in the front door. It is a parking issue. It's all about parking. There is no relief. And it's not getting better, it's getting worse. Right now, right now, I can guarantee you, when I go home, that I will have to park up in a back alleyway in somebody else's backyard, because I'm on a hill. Or I get the choice to park down at the car wash, and walk up Ash Street. As a taxpayer, not a renter, as a taxpayer, I get to do that.
Well, as a taxpayer, and this is where I'm on both sides of the case, and a lot of times, I'm sure a lot of these guys are too, parking is horrible, right? All over the city, we know that. But these huge, massive buildings, if they go off the tax base, our taxes are all going to go up. So we're, you know, it's an unfortunate thing, but that's just, you know, reality. And I've said that before to different projects, I can think of one in West Scranton and a couple other places, and it's a, it's a hard decision. And we do, you say we're snickering and stuff, we take it to heart, because, you know, we try to picture ourselves in these neighborhoods and-
I'm pretty sure that everybody gets the privilege of pulling up in front of their house or their driveway.
That's not, that's not true.
On my street alone, I have seven handicaps and one driveway. That's, you, you're get, the people with handicaps are guaranteed a parking spot, nobody parks there. It seems to be the influx is particularly in front of my house. It's like a magnet, since I've owned the house, it's been a magnet. The whole entire street can be empty, but you want to park in right there. It's convenient to go here, 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 here.
Everybody wants to park in their spot, and unless somebody has a driveway, they're not parking in front of their house. On my street, there's two cars that have driveways, and everybody else has to park wherever they can find a spot, around the corner. That's how it is all over the city, it isn't just on Quincy Avenue. Have you looked? Driven around the city and seen the congestion everywhere?
I've had to look to find a parking spot, because I couldn't park in front of my own house.
It's that way everywhere you go. Everyone wants to park in front of their house.
I mean, you want to beautify the city, you want to get taxpayers, hey, that's great. But don't, don't hand a bunch of malarkey to me. I mean, we all know that, whatever gets put in there, it's not going to be a minimum of six to eight cars. We're looking at a dozen cars. And that don't include, if you have friends come over, or study buddies. Or, you can do what the people next to me are doing. They invite themselves down, they all get in one car to save parking, and leave the rest of them parked there. So I'm dealing with people from medical students, that are using my street as a parking lot, so they don't have to pay for parking.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else here to give testimony? Okay.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any other witnesses. We're finished.
You're finished?
Do nothing, it'll be an eyesore. Deplorable, nobody will put any money in it, and it'll be gone. They can't, they complain it hasn't been fixed in years, but we're trying to remedy the problem that's apparently existing. We can't remedy the problem because people are parking from the hospital anywhere else. I don't, maybe you guys, maybe they should explore permit parking up there. Maybe that would remedy some of the problem. I don't know.
Can you just repeat what you just said? I didn't hear you.
I said maybe the residents should, one, attempt to go to council and get permit parking, or two, get together and purchase the property. Or the question you may wanna ask yourself, why for the last ten years if it's been such an eyesore, no one has done anything to remedy the problem, if it seems to be bothering, affecting destabilizing the neighborhood?
Jack, do we, I don't know if you had to file a continuance to do this, but could we get some sort of a engineer over there to do up a parking plan? Because, I mean, I was over there and I saw that three spots to park there.
I don't think that's our job to do. I mean, that's not our job.
That's not our job to do.
No, I meant, I meant-
No, can't do that.
No, the city wouldn't pay for that.
So they would have to just come up with a better parking plan themselves?
If they want.
Oh, you can, you can put a contingency, you can put a contingency that they have to provide X amount of parking spots.
Well, then I think that's what we should do.
But that's-
You said we should put, we can put a contingency in that they have to fit about a certain amount of spot, more than three, obviously.
The guy said there's no parking.
Well, no, in the backyard, in the backyard.
The gentleman just came up and said there's no parking. He doesn't wanna provide any parking.
What gentleman?
Mr. Russo said there's no parking.
Well, just the three.
You wouldn't be, oh, well, he'd have to come back up here if he wants the answer.
Well, there's three parking spots to the rear, but the neighbors are complaining that there's a problem with parking. But we're gonna make that problem more difficult when we put two four-bedroom apartments in there, which doesn't help anyone.
Right.
But if that's-
The neighbors were just complaining that they didn't think that if, even if there were six spots in the back, that they were guaranteed to park there. But the same goes for anywhere.
But their position is no parking, so they don't want anyone to do anything.
Would you-
Right? So it can never be developed. It can't be developed. It'll just fall down, maybe fall on one of their homes contiguous properties. Yeah.
Two for you, two for you.
The alternative is to put more people in there than we propose. But if that's what they want, we'll be happy to accommodate them. We'll put eight, can have eight people, three park in the back, we have the one and a half per apartment, and we'll have five on the street, make them more problematic, if that's what they want.
And make a motion to vote?
No.
Mr. Gattens?
No.
Ms. Newcomb?
I'm gonna vote yes.
No.
Mr. Palmetessa?
No.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes. With a vote three to two, it has been denied.
Thank you, Attorney Gallagher. Agenda item number three, 1753 Beaumont Avenue.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
Mark Lucci, 1747 Beaumont Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania 18508.
Okay, you can proceed.
I came, I live at 1747 Beaumont Avenue, it's a double home, 1747, 1749.
Guys, could you be quiet in the back, please? Thank you.
I purchased that residence in 1997. I'm there twenty years now. And back in 2014, I purchased a house right next to mine, 1753 Beaumont Avenue. It's a single-family unit, it's kinda dilapidated. I took care of the property, the guy's yard for sixteen years, and he passed to cancer, unfortunately. So I purchased the property in 2014, and I grew up on Perry Avenue, which is a baseball stone-stroll away from where I live now. I know all the neighbors, everything, and we were amateur winemakers, hobby winemakers, and about five years ago, we decided to license. And the wine business kinda took off, whatever, so what I did is, I came in front of zoning here about two years ago. Some of yous look familiar, some of yous don't, and I had approval through zoning at the time to remodel the first floor of this single-family residence for sales, parking out the back. We had everything set up, and I was approved. And then however, when we got in there, there was some more structural damage, and the water was supposed to be turned off, it wasn't. I had major flooding, and the house was just, I couldn't repair it. So I demoed it just this past January. What I'm looking to do is, I'm making wine in two different buildings now, and I'm killing myself, and I wanna consolidate and put up like a nice building on this lot. Like I said, I live right next door. All the neighbors were here back in 2015, supporting me. Some of them are here tonight. The other ones, I spoke to all of them. Nobody has a problem with what I'm doing. I live right next door to it. I'm looking to put up like a single-story, I have a 28 by 28, two-car garage in the back of my property now that I built. I'm looking to do like maybe a 30 by 60. And that's why I'm looking for approval to get this changed from residential. It'll strictly be wine-making, no sales whatsoever, so there's no problem with parking or anything. So I was approved for sales originally. I have a place on Main Avenue in West Scranton, across from Vincenzo's Pizza, next to Keystone Lunch, 134 North Main Avenue. That's my tasting room winery over there. This is what I'm looking to do, just build a one-story, basically twice the size of my garage now, just strictly for making wine.
Now, Jack, if it was owned commercial in 15, it's still, the property is still commercial, right? Even though the structure's not there?
No.
Yeah.
No. Once it's, once the structure's not there-
So it has to go back to residential?
Starts over again.
It goes back to residential?
Starts over, yeah.
Now, this isn't gonna be like a pole barn or anything? This is just gonna be a, like a one-story structure?
Yeah, I was thinking maybe like a frost foot or something like I did with my garage, 30 by 60 wood. Or Armada Builders, there's one that's right back on Pittston Avenue. I know this guy that just put one up. It is from Armada, it is a pole barn, but it's sided, it's beautiful, it's nice, it's like, they have residential ones. So it's not a steel roof, it's shingle roof, skylights, everything, it's beautiful. I want you to understand one thing, like, I live next to this place. I'm not gonna do anything, you know, to lose my property value either.
Right.
How high were you looking at?
One story.
Yeah, but like roof peak?
Probably like a 412 pitch roof, which, you know, you could basically walk on it.
So what's the height of the building?
What's that?
What's the height of the building, man?
The height, probably be like 20 feet at the peak, coming straight down. It's gonna look like a big garage, is what it's gonna look like. I'm gonna have a 36-inch entrance door in the front, like an eight-foot, 16-foot wide, eight-foot-high door to back in, and, you know, I'm gonna have some stainless steel fermenters in there, and pallets of bottles, you know, pallets of bottles and stuff, just wine-making supplies, you know.
What would your hours be for your production? I mean, is this something that you work on overnight, or is it something-
Yeah, I work full-time for the city of Scranton right now. I drive a garbage truck for DPW, and, yeah, so, I mean, I basically am bottling wine every night of the week, you know, right down the road on Perry Avenue is where-
There's no noise gonna come out of there as far as your production equipment or anything like that?
No, not at all, none.
Anyone else here to give testimony? Okay.
What about traffic as far as the delivery of supplies and stuff like that?
I just came back from the Finger Lakes on Sunday, about 2,000 gallons worth of juice up there. I borrowed my buddy's produce truck, lift gate. Unfortunately, I got back a little late at night, 10 o'clock at night. But other than that, I get juice shipped in a couple times throughout the year. And they could testify, not testify, but they could speak for me. Is there any noise or anything far ready or, you know?
Are they your neighbors back there?
Yes, they're my neighbors.
Okay, maybe we can have a show of hands of support, just by show of hands, you're in support of the project? Is anybody back there against the project?
Nope.
So that's good, okay.
That's good.
One more question. I know it's your containers are behind your house, I take us. Are you gonna be storing any of them in the front of that garage on the street side, or is everything gonna be in the rear of it?
Everything will be inside and in the rear.
Okay. Is there any way you could fence that off, just create a blind spot, even put a section of fence across?
I'm planning on fencing the whole property, and in fact, it's getting surveyed probably this week, once I know the property owns. I know, like I said, I grew up in the neighborhood, I know all the neighbors, and I don't do anything, you know, that's not ethical or anything, yes.
Is there any regulations as far as with the electric control board or anything with this wine-making?
It's a great question. I'm federally regulated, I'm regulated through the state LCB, I'm regulated through the Department of Agriculture. So if you were to approve this right now, I have to submit plans, which I know, I'm not gonna spend $500 for plans if I get denied. So upon approval, I have to submit plans, not only for the city, licensing, everything, but to the federal government, to the LCB, and to the Department of Agriculture, absolutely.
Are they okay with you being in a residential area as far as that's concerned?
Yes, we're in a residential area right now. It all starts right here, with your city zoning, and you work your way up. But, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I just recommend if you do get approved here tonight, to try to make the building as residential as possible.
I plan on it, sir, absolutely.
I'll make a move.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I second her.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with a vote five to zero, it's been granted.
Ladies and gentlemen, good luck. Thank you, appreciate it.
And we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Agenda item number four, 1218 South Webster Avenue.
Want to raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
If you wanna.
I do.
Okay. State your name and address, please.
It's Anna Rzasa Kaliz. Do you want me to spell it? Yeah, it's A-N-A-R-Z-A-S-A dash Kaliz, K-A-L-I-Z, like zebra D N.
Okay, you can proceed.
We are, well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you.
Good evening.
We are here to get the permission for a permit for a parking lot that we, 1218. We own the property, four-unit property on South Webster. We kinda need an extra space for our tenants.
Okay.
So that's the only issue.
How many units is your building?
It's a four-family, four units, yeah.
And there's no parking there?
Well, there is a parking on the street, but it's always a problem with the parking. You know, they're always fighting for who's parking first, you know, and then we got neighbors, you know, so like-
So you're just trying to alleviate?
We just try, yeah, we're just trying to make it, you know, better for the tenants, so they'll have their own parking space, there'll be no fighting or anything, you know, like-
How many spots are you looking for on that space?
I'm sorry, well, I have to say, well, like, English is my second language, I'm Polish, so if you can repeat it, then that'll be great.
Oh, how many are you looking to put on that lot, six?
Oh, no, four, well, it's, we only got four units and four people lives in that apartment. So like one, each unit has like one person.
Your-
So like four cars.
Okay, your plot shows six cars.
Yeah, well, we come here all the time, so four cars is gonna be our car, and then probably, like, sometimes the tenants has their, like, visitors or stuff, so like, extra space.
No, but the thing that we're asking is, on the spot that you're looking to put pavement?
Yeah, like, to pave it like six.
Six, okay.
Yeah, but like, minimum four for our tenants.
Okay. Is your property right next door to this property?
It's just right next to it, right on the opposite side.
Across the street.
Across the street, yeah, that's the right word.
Do you have any, do you have any additional units in your house that you plan on developing, or is it, all that can be in there is four?
No, not really, only four.
Okay.
I have a question. I was out there seeing a land bank sign.
Yeah.
Is there a stipulation that you have to follow as far as purchasing that number of land bank?
We didn't purchase yet. It's not the land bank that's selling it, it's the Fidelity Bank that's selling it right now.
Or is it a bank?
It's the bank, yeah, the banks is selling it, yeah.
I thought that property, Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, is that property part of the land bank already?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, so it's not the bank, it's being sold by the land bank.
From my knowledge, the banks owns it.
Which bank?
Fidelity Bank.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I got the letter as you-
Okay, oh, yeah, okay, can I show the board that, please?
Yeah, but there is something weird with, because I looked into properties before with the land bank, and it could still be owned or something, because the property that I looked at was sold before the land bank. So I don't know the stipulations on it, but there's some kind of-
What are your suggestions, guys?
Actually, whether she's purchasing from the land bank or Fidelity Bank, for our purposes, doesn't matter, yeah.
Well, like, I didn't buy it yet, like, we didn't, like, we didn't buy it, like, it's me and my husband, like, we didn't buy it yet because we didn't know like how you guys are gonna react for our, you know, request, but like, if you say yes, then we can purchase it.
Have you spoke to, have you spoken to the neighbors on each side?
Well, the neighbors, well, yeah, that's one of our neighbor.
You'd have to come up and be sworn in if you want this.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, well-
Well, that's one neighbor, I'm not sure-
Yeah, we spoke with three neighbors, actually, yeah, one of, I know, right side, yeah, and her, right next to her.
Wait, hold on, hold on one second. Is there anyone here to oppose this? Okay.
Well, they didn't say anything that they're gonna oppose, they'll be happy if the tenants will be out of the street, you know, so I don't think they want to oppose.
When I was posting it, several neighbors come out, and everybody was pleased with the idea.
So, Jack, this would have to be paved, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we will pave it, we will fence it, we will try to make it nice, you know.
Yeah, I explained that, and also the buffer zone.
Yeah, the five-feet buffers.
The plot plan shows the buffer.
Okay. I'd make a motion to vote?
Second, oh.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattens?
I'm gonna vote no, and just let me explain real quick. My no vote is because I'm not in agreement with parking lots in neighborhoods, and that's what we're doing here. I think it devalues the properties around there and each side of the future sale, so I'm gonna vote no.
Ms. Newcomb?
I'm, I'm with Gattins, no.
Mr. Palmetessa?
Yes.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote three to two, has been granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, 101719 Remington Avenue.
Hello.
Good evening.
Could you please raise your right hand and state your, I'm sorry, do you solemnly swear your testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Okay, state your name and address, please.
I'm Sanjrene Emile. Sanjrene, S-A-N-D-R-I-N-E. Last name, E-M-I-L-E.
Chief?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to, to get approval for four units that we have on 1017, 1019 Remington Avenue.
To restore two units?
It's a four units. Right now, we bought it as four units. We had some tenants when we bought it. We bought it in 2000, in 2008. We had some tenants and then after a while they left, so it was vacant for a while, so, because of the length. So it was reduced to two units. So we would like to, for them to restore, you know, the other two units to make it back to four units.
How many, how many units are being lived in right now?
We have four units.
How many are being lived in right now?
I can answer that, two.
Two?
Two are occupied and two are vacant.
So the downstairs are occupied and the upstairs are unoccupied?
No, it's.
Or is it upstairs, downstairs?
I'm only going to speak because the girls, the ladies have difficulty, language difficulties. So there's four units total, two are occupied, and there would be the units on the 1017 side, up and down. And the other two units were vacant without power for a while, longer, for more than six months.
So was it condemned, was it condemned?
No.
No, it was never condemned. But again, the 1019 side was vacant for quite a while. They had long, they had tenants on the 17 side, and they were there quite a while as well, so.
So why would it be knocked down to two if it was always lived in?
It wasn't. It was just, they were just.
Yeah, the 19 side was vacant for a while. And I believe, does it have power now, the 1019 side?
Electricity?
Yes.
Because it didn't at the time.
I have a question about parking. It's, I noticed that on Remington, there was only parking on one side. Do they allow parking on two sides? Jack, do you know?
Yes, when we spoke with our neighbors, there's no issues, no problem on the street. People, they can park anywhere. And on the other side, we have the EMT, and I spoke to them too. They said they have their own parking, so they don't park on the street. And then the, the tenants that we have, they have no parking, they have no cars. So they...
If you want, if you want to talk, you could be sworn in too. If you want, if you have things to add, just stand in front of the microphone.
Want to swear, right?
Yep. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Martin Emile. M-A-R-T-I-N-E, E-M-I-L-E.
Okay, you may proceed.
We spoke to the tenants. We have, we have some of their signatures. They signed. They have no problem with the parking. And the whole street is like, there's no, it's empty. There's no problem. Because the other side, there's no houses on the other side. And it's like one street, like two streets, and it's very isolated. There's no problem with parking.
That's why I was unsure about the two sides, because the other side is just.
They do all cars.
And they have their own. You can park, and there's no restriction with parking. There's no like sign on the street that says no parking.
Well, that's good.
And the ambulance company has plenty of parking for their own use, so.
Well, okay, that's all.
The ambulance have their own parking and it's, there's no problem with parking.
But you still need parking for seven?
Six.
Six?
Six.
I see that you, there's.
That's part of the variance request.
It's four units?
That's part of the variance request to not have the off-street parking.
Right, there never was parking.
How long do you have this house?
We bought it 2008, nine years.
And you live, and, and you've been living in it?
We live in New York, but we comes once in a while and stay in the bottom apartment, 1019.
Sixty, seventy, forty, okay, New York, New York.
They're teachers from New York.
Who takes care of the property when you're, when you're in New York? Do you have somebody that takes care of the property for you?
Yes, when, when it was occupied, we had property managers.
Okay.
No one else is here to give testimony, correct?
Make a motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
No.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Palmetessa?
No.
Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote three to two, has been granted.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six, 201 Prospect Avenue.
Hello, this, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
May I state your name and address, please?
Antonio Hernandez, 1511 Cedar Ave.
Okay, you can proceed.
We're here because we own the property 201 Prospect Ave for the last two years, and we want to open up a grocery store inside. But since it has been vacant since we, since we purchased it, and it has no parking, we really can't. And that's why we just wanted to see if we can get an approval, even if it's, there's off-street parking, just for the property itself.
The difference between grocery store and a residential is customers, a lot more cars?
No, yeah, I know. Yeah, it's understandable. But, I mean, we own two grocery stores right now, one in South Side and one on East Side. And we've been at it for 10 years, and we like to keep our customers in and out really quickly. And on average, it's a small grocery store. Nobody's in there more than 20 minutes, not more than 20 minutes. I mean, we like to keep our customers happy, keep them in and out. We like to just keep them fast.
How many apartments do you have above the store?
Two.
And they, where do they park?
In the back. There's like a little garage in the back for them personally, that's it. But the streets are always empty. It's a very quiet, very calm neighborhood. And we just wanted to open it because it's also been vandalized twice. And we don't know who it has been, because I mean, that's, I mean, that's it.
Hey, you want to, you want to maybe read this?
Yeah.
You have somebody opposing this?
Oh, I wasn't aware.
Mr. Hernandez, if you want to take a look at this. Then you could address that after you get a chance to read it.
How many spots does, would he technically be short? Well, all of them, but how many is all of them? For one per, how many, first of all, how many employees would there be?
It'd be one, because it's family-owned. So it'd just be like, say, I'm just sitting there.
Only one person working in the store at a time?
Yeah, one person, yeah.
So.
How, how large, how large is the grocery store section?
Well, it's a whole downstairs, so it's whatever, I don't even know the dimensions of the building, which would be all downstairs.
Okay, but part of that downstairs would be storage. It wouldn't be open to the customers.
Well, which would be, just be in the back, though. I mean, everything can come into the back.
It's got to be 1,000 square feet down there, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I, I think I measured, I came up with about 800.
And this person who does live at 205, they do, I mean, I mean, they say there's traffic there, but honestly, there's never any traffic. I have tenants who live up there. It's so calm, they say.
I, I.
And they have a handicap parking spot, believe, I believe. So, I mean, they have their own spot.
Because they have their own spot, doesn't make it.
No, and a lot of people don't respect it either. I know that.
And it is a busy street. I disagree with you on that. And it is congested parking. You also have a school up the street that uses that corner for crossing and stuff like that. So my concern is you have zero parking. You can't even offer one spot up because of your tenants. I just think we're put into a busy area right there.
To answer the previous question, assuming it's 800 square feet, he would need four off-street parking spots.
So that's at least four spots short. I mean, you don't know how many customers you're going to have at any given time.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, since, from what we know, the only time it gets busy is around 4:00, when everybody gets out of work. And then after that, just like one person every like 20 minutes, that's about it. And we own two grocery stores, so we, I mean, I have a pretty general idea of what comes in and out for the last 10 years. Another thing I want to throw out there is, I mean, I mean, I don't want to be a baby about it, but I mean, it's, it was just a commercial building, and we had to pay commercial taxes on it. And if we wanted to transfer it to a residential, we'd come up with the same problem of having enough parking for the, say, we wanted to build two more buildings downstairs, we'd have to come up with the same problem of not having enough parking for.
See, there's a difference. I, and I'll speak for myself personally. It's a little easier to approve something that's going to have two cars or three cars than cars in and out constantly.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't guarantee your customers are going to be that slow in the store. You can't guarantee you're only going to have one customer in the store at a time. And if you have a business, you want ten in there.
Yeah.
That's the whole challenge. You want the place to be busy and, you know, it would be crazy in this then.
Yeah.
It was a commercial store back into the early 1970s.
Yeah, it used to be the old magistrate's building before.
Right, and it was a magistrate building, which is a slower atmosphere compared to a grocery store. And when it was a grocery store, as you heard testimony earlier, back in the 1950s and 60s, everyone didn't own a car and most people walked to the store. So we're in a different era right now, where, like the gentleman stated, everyone has two or three cars, and people, instead of walking a half a block, myself included, will drive to that store. So it just creates a problem with no parking at all.
Did you look in to see if there was any parking you could?
There was a lot that a friend of, a friend of mine works with somebody, they said they'd offer it to us. But I spoke with Mr. Sweeney, but they said it'd be within 200 feet, and it's a little bit overdue on a fee for me to actually be able to use it.
Jack, how far was the lot?
I, I don't remember, because I knew it was over, so I was like.
Yeah, it was a lot farther away than that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was 200 feet or something.
If you wanted me to look at the lot in detail, I mean, it kind of like, I got the impression that that wasn't anything settled or definite. But if you want to continue it, and I could look at the lot with you and your person and firm that up, and then come back with something.
Yeah, I mean, if you can like, try to see if you can get some parking spots close by.
Yeah, like Sean was saying, I'd be happy to work with you on that, if you think that's a reality. But my impression from you was that it wasn't anything firm.
Well, we, we kind of got discouraged because it was over 200 feet. But I mean, we can talk to the person. He would be like, yeah, it's on board if you want.
You guys, you guys could look at it, and also could see if you could obtain something a little closer or whatever, and you could come back next.
Yeah, well, I mean, everything else around is, is like you said, residential. Everybody else lives around, it's residential.
Jack, is that the lot in the middle of the block there?
I believe so. It's in the middle of the block, right?
Yeah, it's in the middle of a block, yeah.
And would he have egress to that coming off Prospect Avenue?
Again, I didn't even look at the lot because I didn't think it was anything serious.
It's working in alleyway, so people have to walk to the alleyway.
Yeah, but I, I'll be straightforward. Your customers won't park in that lot.
No, probably not, honestly.
Yeah, with the bags of groceries, it's not, it's not rational.
But the tenants and the worker could possibly park there, so.
Yeah, the worker.
Yeah, I mean, maybe you could look into that a little bit better and then, I said, revisit it next.
You know, I would agree. I would think it's worth looking into if you want.
Looking into what exactly?
The lot.
The lot, the lot that I was talking?
Seeing if, first of all, if you can acquire it, and that works. And then, you know, getting a definite distance and, and so on.
I can definitely acquire the lot. Does, I mean, the distance, the only problem, like I said, I mean, nobody honestly, well, some people will.
We could look at it if you want.
Yeah, well, why don't we continue it till next month, meet up with Jack and see if we come up with some kind of plan for the parking?
Yeah, I mean, it could work. Yeah. Yeah, I didn't want to present, I had nothing to present, because like I said, we thought it was over 200 feet, and I mean.
Well, we could try to work it out. Again, I didn't look at it close enough.
We could vote today if you want.
Well, I mean, if you vote today, does it, do I have to?
You don't have to repay. If you're worried about re, you know.
If we, if we vote today, and then, then he would have to repay if he.
Oh, I'm sorry. If we continue, what I meant.
But if we just.
If we continue it, you don't have to pay. If we vote today and you want to come back again, you have to pay again.
Okay, so I was continuing, having to pay another 400.
That's what I thought.
All right, sounds good then. All right, well then.
Yeah, you call me and we'll get together and we'll go over and see if we can figure it out.
Don't we have to vote on a continuance?
Yep, I'll make a motion on a continuance.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gattins?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
No, no on the continuance.
Mr. Palmetessa? Chairman O'Neill?
Yes, with the vote four to one, it continues next month.
So Antonio, do you have my number?
Yeah.